Recognitions that I'm aware of, any you're aware of, okay. Minutes from the June 7th Joint Fair Board Meeting and our June, this was a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and our Fair Board Meeting and our Board of Commissioners Meeting.
Mr. Chair, approval of the minutes of June 7th, Umatilla County Board of Commissioners and the minutes of June 7th, the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners and the Umatilla County Fair Board.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Is there a second to that?
Yes, I say it.
Sorry, I'll say it.
I don't think Melinda heard me, no. She said she got. Do we have any additions? Okay, no additions. This is time and place. If you're not on our agenda, and there were agendas available, I don't know if everyone got one, if you're not on the agenda today to present something to the Board, this is the time and place for public comment or questions, and that time is limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone that wants to address Board of Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any presentations that are not specifically on the regular business agenda? Okay, we'll move right into our business agenda. We have the Soil and Water Conservation, both the watershed council presentations, the Umatilla, and the Walla Walla Basin. So with that, Kyle, if you would come forward to do your presentation, and those folks doing presentations today, please identify yourself, your position, who you're with, and your address.
Greetings, I'm Kyle Wagner, District Manager for the Umatilla County Soil and Water Conservation District. Our address is 1 South Close Line, STU 130. I just wanted to give a brief presentation of the use of the county funds that we received for the fiscal year 2016-2017. To begin, a brief overview of what the Soil and Water Conservation District does. Our mission is to conserve, protect, and develop soil, water, and other natural resources for the economic and environmental benefit of the residents of Umatilla County. And the district accomplishes our mission in three different ways. Those three ways are outreach, project planning implementation, and also assisting producers in conservation. So in our outreach category, we host watershed field days with this area fifth grader natural resource education outreach. It serves about 800 Umatilla and Morro County fifth graders every year. We also participate in local work group meetings in the agricultural world, host, and also attend trainings, and then also provide a newsletter. For project planning implementation, our primary work is through small and large grants, primarily using state funds, and we also provide technical assistance and consulting. And then the third way that we serve the county is we help local producers preserve soil, improve water quality, improve production, create a lasting operation. That's primarily accomplished through CREP planting, which is the Conservation and Renewal Enhancement Program. Just this year briefly, for that fiscal year 2016-2017, we had four major grants. The first one was the Upper Greasewood Conservation Alternatives. The second was the Haskell Spring Development. We also had the Jerry Weather Spring Development, and then finally, an irrigation project. And those total bolstered grants to 65,000. And then we, this fiscal year, I submitted two other large projects. One is a Stanfield Irrigation Pipeline Project, working with the Stanfield Irrigation District, and the other was a Russian Oil for Move All in the Hermison Area. Our partnerships, Umatilla County, the Umatilla County Meat Board, Oregon Department of Agriculture, OSU, NRCS, Confederate Tribe, Umatilla Indian Reservation, Umatilla Basin Watershed Council, Walla Walla Watershed Council, the local working groups, local working groups, Burt's Creek Restoration Team, and then the Bloma for our Hermison Area. So now, the use of funds for the fiscal year 2016-2017, typically those funds are used wherever we need them, but I try to put them where we have the highest impact for the countywide projects. And this year, the district used the majority of that $10,000 for the Upper Greasewood Conservation Alternative Project. That project was the sediment hydrology study for the Upper Greaswood watershed helix area, working on trying to fix the flooding problem that has been plaguing the helix for many, many years. So we were able to, that's where we put the majority of our funds. The rest of those funds were used for those other three grants that I mentioned, both the spring developments and the irrigation project. So this is a quick chart of the allocation of those funds between the Greasewood, the Haskell, the Weathers, and the Bradley Project. Thank you for your support. We wouldn't be able to accomplish our goals without you, and we hope to see you out in the field. And there should be one more slide there. The district is always here to serve Umatilla County, and some of our skills and perks include GIS mapping capabilities, environmental impact project mitigation, grant application experience and capabilities, low-cost research and analysis. We're a non-regulatory agency. We specialize in water management, erosion management, wildlife management. We're small local government, non-federal, non-state, non-county, and we provide project management for a diversity of fields. Any questions?
Great, thanks, Kyle. Questions?
The perks, if you could go back to the screen just for a moment. The grant application experience and capabilities, that's how it applies to what you're doing?
Yes.
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 That's not available for others to participate in?
Yeah, mainly, we act as, like I mentioned, it's a non-state, non-federal entity, but we can apply for federal and state funds to help implement projects for producers and entities in Umatilla County that need any, like I mentioned, any sort of wildlife, water erosion projects.
Thank you.
And then the money we pay the district is used for seed money for a lot of these. Okay, other questions? Kyle, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay.
Just to introduce myself, I'm Brian Walcott. I'm the Executive Director of the Walla Walla Basin Watershed Council. Address 810 South Main Street, Milton Free Water. And just to get moving along, because I know you guys have a lot on your agenda, the Watershed Council has used the county funds in the past year to leverage over $1.3 million in state, federal, and foundation grant dollars that we have used to implement projects on the ground, and I've got a few highlights of some of those projects. What's that? Yeah, that's great. And this is just a list of some of the different funding sources that we've used over the last year, and the grants that were funded with those. The majority, the largest source of funding is Bonville Power Administration dollars that we put towards our water projects. And just to back up a little bit, the Watershed Council is a nonprofit organization with a local board, and we come up with local solutions that everyone can agree upon across our diverse board membership, so that we can come up with an agreeable solution to a natural resource issue. And in the Walla Walla Basin, most of the issues that we've worked on revolve around water availability, both surface water availability and groundwater availability, making sure that there's enough for farms, fish, and also the city of Milton Free Water. This is an image of our shallow aquifer recharge projects. We began implementing these in 2004. Last year, we built two additional groundwater recharge sites, one on Locust Road, the other on Triangle Road. This past winter, we had 6,000 acre feet, a little over 6,000 acre feet, that we put into the ground at our 12 locations in Oregon. And we always hope to get around 7,500. That's our, what we think we can do with this number of shallow aquifer recharge sites. However, the cold weather that we had limited our ability to divert water from the river for about a month and a half, and so that decreased how much water we could put in the ground last year.
Good.
And this is our largest shallow aquifer recharge site, and our first one, and this just shows the range. Since we started doing recharge, we've put anywhere from 3,000 acre feet to 7,500 acre feet of water in the ground, and that water goes into the ground, it's available for public use. Some of that water reemerges in spring creeks on the valley floor that are flowing again now as a result of our recharge projects. We recently had a spring emerge over the last two years. It showed up in a farm field where it had been dry for years. Now that spring's starting to run again. Also, Johnson Creek and Mud Creek are also two creeks that we've seen running much better since we started doing our recharge program. Okay. And here's the Locust Road site going in place. This is a buried aquifer recharge project where there's a farm lane over the top of it, so it's not taking land out of production. This is on one of the roll-off orchards. Another project we completed last year is we completed a final design for the Bowlin-Kelly Habitat Project, and this is where we had six landowners experiencing erosion problems, and then also the river's trying to route itself around the Joe West Bridge, one of the county bridges. We wanted to make sure that we can get this design and working on grant funding now. This is the white ditch piping project. Last year, we completed another 2,000 feet of piping for this irrigation efficiency project with Hudson Bay District Improvement Company. We're also wrapping up our By State Walla Walla River Water Supply Strategy. We just, we're getting numbers in for the Pine Creek Reservoir Site. A 26,000 acre foot reservoir is coming in right around $200 million, and we're going to be comparing that to the cost in ongoing O&amp;M of a Columbia River Water Exchange. We also have several large irrigation efficiency projects that will be part of the strategy, an aquifer storage and recovery project. We just got feasibility study, money to work with Milton Free Water to look at that ASR project to help reduce the pressure on the basalt aquifer. And then we also will continue working on our shallow aquifer recharge program with local farms, and we've been modeling out the improvements with groundwater and surface water as we are debating which of these projects are going to be the best projects to implement in the future, especially deciding between the Columbia River Water Exchange and the Pine Creek Reservoir Site. We, up until this past year, we've had funding from the state to work on education and outreach with our local students, our K-12 programs in our local schools, and then we also do a landowner tour, where we tour 20 to 30 landowners and agencies out to our projects. Unfortunately, the state of Oregon is reinterpreting how they fund education and outreach programs. We're afraid we might not be able to continue this. We're working right now to challenge the way the state is interpreting the education and outreach program. We think it's a very valuable function of councils and districts across the state. It lets landowners know what types of projects are available, if they could implement on their ground, and that there's organizations like ours that can help them write grants and help them do those projects, so they're not doing it all at their own expense. But that's what I had, just a quick summary of projects we did over the last year, and I'll turn it over to Mike unless there's questions.
Brian, just a quick question on the Pine Creek Reservoir, Columbia River Water Exchange. Hasn't that been going on for a while, and how's the progress going with it?
Yeah, well, there was an original Pine Creek Reservoir Study the Corps of Engineers and the tribes worked on as a new source of water for our local farms. The Corps of Engineers came up with a very expensive project. It was in 300 to 350 million dollar range, and we've worked with local farms and some state funding from the state of Washington, actually, to re-explore that option, to see if we can do it on a cheaper basis, and looking at just getting enough water to serve the ag interest. And it's now coming in at about 200 million for the 26,000 acre foot reservoir. It's a little smaller than what the Corps planned on, but the Corps didn't do a good job of calculating what all the irrigation water rights are, that they would have to let go on to those diverters that use water in the wintertime, and also, they did not account for in-stream flows that need to be maintained to satisfy environmental concerns from all the agencies. And so we feel like we have a better thought-out project, cheaper project, and then the exchange project is another one the Corps of Engineers looked at, and we're also coming up with a lower implementation cost and a lower O&amp;M cost. The ongoing O&amp;M operation and maintenance would be cheaper. So we think we've come out with a more practical approach than what the tribes and the Corps did about 10 years ago.
Good, thank you. You also had a very nice outreach here, I think about a year ago, where public was invited to tour some of your projects. Is that one of the outreaches that the state of Oregon funding covered, and that's no longer going to be available?
Yeah, there's currently a rule interpretation on the part of the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. They're feeling that the only outreach that they can fund into the future has to be specifically targeted to a certain project type with a landowner to have a successful project implemented on that property. And it's going to reduce our ability to speak to the general public about what we do, and we're finding that to be a concern. And I would be interested in having some support on that, and could provide a little information and a memo next week, and see if we could have some kind of a statement from the Board of Commissioners would be very helpful.
Very good. Go forward to that.
Unlike the Umatilla Basin, the Walla Walla Basin is very unique in the fact that the river and that watershed covers two counties and two states. Irrigators in the Oregon side have been required to bypass flows for fish enhancement. The basin council has worked very diligently on trying to protect those flows with water resources, still having quite a few issues with protecting that bypass flow. And one of the issues, they end up having to give up about, is it 27 CFS?
Yeah, in the winter, spring, and fall, and then summer is 25.
And so it makes it real difficult when you see that water, for those irrigators going down the river, once it crosses the border into Washington, Walla Walla County, it's a free problem. They pump it. And so below the Tushie Bridge, and there's another bridge on below Nine Mile, where there are times in the summertime when you can walk across a river and never get your feet wet. So there are some issues there, too, that they're working on. And I've got to say, thanks to Brian, they take that, is it 10,000 that we give? That 10,000 used, and as does other basin councils. 10,000 we provide, they take that money, and in these projects, they have leveraged, with you folks, it's been 1.4 million in project funding. So that 10,000 has gone a long ways. I know people a lot of times say, why does the county give money to these different districts? Well, this is what the return is. So, Brian, thank you.
There's just a paper copy of the letter that I sent you all.
Okay, Umatilla Basin.
Hi, I'm Michael Ward, the Director of the Umatilla Basin Watershed Council. We're at 920 Southwest Frazier Avenue, Suite 210. We don't get a lot of visitors on that side of town, so welcome anyone at any time. So yeah, before I go into it, I'd like to lead off where you guys led off, and get into your point about the funds Brian brought to the county and what the return on some of that is. OWEB actually just partnered and did an OSU research to try to calculate what the return is on restoration funds and grant money. And what it showed was every million dollars in restoration funds that's brought to the county, it creates 24 jobs. So I thought that was really interesting, and we're all happy to be employed as well. So the Watershed Council, I'm still kind of new to it, I've been here for seven months, and the slides and the presentation I provided, yeah, okay, so this is kind of what I inherited in wrapping up here, and so it's been a great learning experience to work on these projects. This is just some quick background, I'm not going to go into each one in detail, but maybe more about what they resulted in, because these projects take a few years, and this is the culmination of wrapping up and some of the actual on-the-ground work. For example, Athena Bridge Passing and Feasibility Study. So that resulted in a two-year project where now we're going to move forward and work with the City of Athena, the county, and then partners with the Confederate Tribe, Umatilla Indian Reservation, and we're going to attempt to replace that aging bridge and the weir dam there and remove it to open up 26 miles of really nice habitat of Wild Horse Creek that's pretty much, the feasibility study is inaccessible to any fish moving upstream. So that's a project we're looking at, planning for in the fall and moving forward with. And I'm going to move on to Birch Creek, so that's another project that I came into that was going on as an outreach project that went on for the last few years. I was lucky enough to come in at the end where it's now wrapping up, and we get to do some more on-the-ground work. And yes, sorry, I jumped around here a little bit. So yeah, we'll go back to Athena, you see here, this is the bridge and the weir that we're going to remove. So in Birch Creek, we're doing outreach and we're partnering with SWCD and the Confederate Tribe, Umatilla Indian Reservation, and that's been a great study. What's been going on is assessment, and our department for the assessment is just doing some outreach, and the assessment came back and showed one of the things is off-channel habitat has been a real issue for fish that need to spawn in different areas of the stream. So moving forward, we're going to be trying to focus on creating some of that habitat and work with landowners. And being new, I've learned about the floods, of course, in the 90s that hit some of them pretty hard out there. So a lot of them have different lands and bridges that were lost, and they haven't been able to access in 20 years or so. So we're hoping to take some of that acreage that's been not been farmed and return it to some off-channel habitat ponds, different stuff, some floodplain reconnectivity. The exciting project going on, I don't know if you guys can go up or down, is the Dillon Dam. If you actually go to the top, you'll see here a picture of the dam. We're going to be removing that dam with ODFW and the tribes here July 10th, and that's been a project that's been going on for six years. So it's really exciting to come in right here at the end. And when you're coming in the end, one of the things you do is close the grants. And so doing that, I got to look back and see all the different people it took to make this happen. And it's hard to give one credit to anybody. I think with one piece and one component removed, it just wouldn't happen. And so you can see here, there's cottonless jam on the fish ladders and different things. So for the Western Irrigation District, this has been quite a version of maintenance to upkeep this dam right here. So we worked with OWEB and built a pipeline this last spring to divert water to the Western Irrigation's other existing canal, and this will allow us to get in here and remove this dam in July 10th, except ODFW. So it's a really exciting project. We're going to do an OWEB site visit on July 25th. I'm going to make sure to email all you guys here in the coming week with the agenda. We're also hosting the reception to the Board at the Port Amora, so it'd be great to have you guys out and to get to meet the OWEB Board and talk with them and encourage them to continue sending fines to our county. So this is really exciting. It'd be great to have people out on site to get to see this. Part of the Watershed Councils and SOT is that, you know, is the theme of all of this is we really value outreach, and we try to do as much as possible. And there's always this general outreach we can kind of do. We take advantage of technology through social media or web and try to reach people as much as possible. That's, you know, with the county money, I went back and ran reports and QuickBooks over the last years to try to see how it was used. And often I saw that was where the money was going, is through different outreach materials, or participating in different outreach events. This last year, we just participated in the science fair, and we're going to do a river cleanup August 5th. And so we're partnering with stewards, Umatilla River Environment, and also Parks and Recreation in the East Ragony. And so all of us collaborating are going to try to see this cleanup that was almost 20 years old, but last year it didn't happen due to some planning and different issues. But we're going to try to have it back this year, August 5th, and hope it won't be too hot and the river won't be too slimy. I've already been warned, but I'm in charge of going down the river because I got the younger legs, so. But these are the kind of things I'm trying to do in the community. Being new and moving forward, looking at outreach, as Brian's pointed out, there's some changes happening. So how that's going to enter, we're not sure. If that funding goes away, then you guys funding us the $10,000s are extremely important, because although we've shown you a lot of big numbers, that money is meant for projects, and very little gets to go to different, you know, new ideas or more community general outreach. So I think moving forward, whether, however they change these rules, that money will be continuing to be used in that fashion. Going through our finances, also, just, the list was extremely long of local businesses that end up, you know, supplying these things. 90% of the projects we do, the money and people use is right here in the county. It's very few reaches out, and when it does, it's maybe an engineering firm or someone that we've continually worked with in the state of Oregon for quite a long time. So being new, it's been interesting going back and seeing all these things and how the funds are used, and we'll continue to look forward on how we can leverage these further to bring as much money to the county as possible.
Did, have they finished the piping from the Dillon Dam?
Yes, sir, it's done. We wrapped it up in late April.
Okay.
And with the water this year, we were figuring across all the way through, but everything worked out and it's flowing good. Last time I checked, we were getting about 16 CFS there, so everyone was pretty happy.
How far upriver did they have to go from that?
Just a few miles up to the Alexis.
Just a matter of curiosity for myself and maybe the rest of the public, but knowing the sensitivities of the fish and the water and so on, how the heck do you take a dam out? You can't blow it.
A lot of permits, and then, yeah, they're going to get it.
No, I mean, physically, how do you take it out?
Yeah, they're going to get in there and take it apart piece by piece. So, you know, we're excited to see when we get down in there. It's been 100 years since anyone has laid eyes on, down in the infrastructure of that dam, so it's exciting to see the way it was built, what comes out. I purchased some time-lapse cameras, so we're going to try to document the project much better and help tell the story of these projects continually. So I'll make sure that you guys get to see that, because we're really excited to have a video of it all, and we'll be putting it on our social media.
And the reception's 25th?
The 25th, and I'll make sure you guys, the agenda will be going out this week and everything, I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy of it. And one thing I'd like to mention about us is we are a local nonprofit, we're a 501(c)(3), so we have access to applying to grants and bringing money to the county, as I've mentioned. Although we do focus on restoration work, if we work with other groups who form teams and take ownership, we're happy to work on a much wider range of possibility of projects, acting as a bit of a flow-through and umbrella to help bring new projects and different other interests that people have in the county. And my last son, I was on part of building an escape park and a motorcycle track that was turned over to the Parks and Recreation. That has nothing to do with restoration, but I like that kind of stuff, so.
Okay.
Thanks for having me. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Okay, so we see where those seed dollars have gone to work and how they benefited the county. So, okay, our next item, our workers' compensation. Dick is going to give us a rundown of where we're at with our property liability insurance and think about the renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dick Ferretti with Ferretti Rebal Insurance, Royal Lake, East Main, and Hermiston.
Thank you.
And as agent, I have two items to discuss today. We're looking at the renewal proposals for workers' compensation, insurance, and our property casualty. And it seems like I say this every year, but I have good news and bad news. It's been this way for five or six years in a row. One goes up and one comes down, and that's what we have again today. I guess it doesn't matter which one I talk about, but cast out two different handouts, and if we start with the workers' compensation, that's the good news. And I might as well give you the end result analysis, you know what we're looking for. And I might as well give you the end result analysis and you know what we're looking for. Basically, our workers' compensation insurance is going down by 20,000. Our property casualty insurance is going up by almost 40,000, it's 37,000. So that's the bad news. But let me show you why. On the workers' compensation losses, this is the loss history of our numbers and losses that we have over the years. And you can see that workers' compensation is so loss-sensitive, most of your premium is right off the number of losses you have. And you can see as we grew, our losses average was up, but the last 10 years, or the last year since 2010 are the important ones. And if you remember, 2011, we had a serious fatality and that was a serious loss that caused that loss history to be so great. Because of that, it affected our experience and for three years, our rates were much higher. They have come down since, and I'll show you what the result is. But this last year and this year that we're finishing up is another big year, which is the claim that just popped up, and I don't have the information on it yet, why this is. There may be a reserve or something that happened. But that will not affect us for another year, because we always go back four years and use the oldest three years experience. So that will happen. If you turn to page two, the experience factor, workers' compensation is determined by your payroll times a rate for every employee's classification that they have. Police have a different rate than the road department, et cetera. But the experience mod follows with each one of your departments. And if you see, the last few years from 2014, where we were 1.09, we have consistently dropped. And for this year coming up, our new mod is .78, which means that we are 22% better than the average city or county in the state of Oregon. And that's a direct measurement of that. What happened to determine that .78 is we dropped a year, the 2012 to 2013 year, we dropped a year of 71,000, but we added a new year of 2015, 16, which is 57,203. So that's what directly affected our mod to decrease. If you look at the next page of page three, we have showing you the history of over the last four years plus this current year. The manual premium for workers' compensation is the rate times your payroll. But then we apply the experience mod, which this year is .78, and that reduces your premium by the 22%. And that because of what we call a standard premium. And then we apply any discounts or additional cost. And if you see the first number, that 34710 is the volume discount. The bigger is the premium, the bigger is the discount. The annual prepay, which we've decided to take advantage of, by prepaying our annual premium in advance by July 10th, we get a 3.5% discount from SAIF. So that's a 7432. The advisor allowance is, we have determined over the years to go for a flat fee for your agent of record for our proposals. SAFE doesn't have the automation capability of not, to not give us a commission. So what this is, is the commission that we would have received if we were on a commission basis rather than a flat fee basis. Then if you look below, the 8,000 is what we have negotiated with the commissioners for our fee to handle the workers' compensation. So basically, you get your $4,000 credit. And it's still fair refill with these flat fees, because just because your premium goes up or down, doesn't affect the workload for us. So the proposal for fees is, I think, still a very fair way to do it. The additional cost with workers' compensation is a state tax of 6.8%, that's the fund of Workers' Compensation Department. And then the terrorism that the federal government provides with their coverage, and that's $3,000. So you can see from 2013, where our total cost was 272, we're now down to 180,000. So that's the good news. On the last page, one of the reasons that we're running SAIF and not CIS, which is the other competing entity for workers' compensation, is on this last page. This is the dividends that we've received from SAFE in the last six years in a row. Dividends are not guaranteed. We may get it, we may not. We have no way of doing it. It's how SAFE does over the years and whether their board or people are a dividend or not. But as you can see with those significant amounts that we've received, if we do not stay with them, we have no chance of getting this dividend. So with CIS, they are competitive on a retro-rated basis, but we're not large enough with that to be competitive with them on that. So SAFE is still our best proposal for our workers' compensation insurance. Before I switch to the rest of the insurance, any questions on the workers' compensation?
I'm glad to see the trend keeps going down.
So where does the computed dividend populate into the cost of the insurance?
It doesn't. It's just a, it's just an add, we might get it or we may not, so I don't even put it in.
Don't even factor it into our cost that way? It does factor in, but it doesn't factor in on the front page.
Correct, correct. Since the time here to that, we never know. I'm surprised that they've done it six years in a row. Usually a company will have very profitable years until a dividend. And I just didn't anticipate six years in a row, maybe three or four, I think, in some of the past years, but it's still going and rates have been coming down and they're still making money.
Obviously, it appears Umatilla County is quite profitable business for them.
Okay, if we switch to the property and casualty section, this section, we're with City County Insurance Service. We really don't have much of a choice. Years ago, we had the private insurance companies that tried to compete, but with the Oregon tort laws and everything, it's a different for them, and all of them have departed the marketplace, basically. City and county insurance, since it is a self-insured pool, it's just cities and counties in, it's how we all do that affects what our rates are. And as you can see, we're talking about property insurance. This includes all the buildings, the contents of buildings, your mobile equipment, anything that we have in the property area. And those are our total values that we have at risk right now, 81,918,000. And you can see, this was the good news. The only good news is property insurance have actually come down. They have been fairly profitable. And you can see back in 2014 at 93,000, and now in 2017, we're even less, we're down to 92,000. That coverage includes earthquake, water damage for 5 million plus equipment breakdown, which is basically boiler and machinery coverage in that, for that premium. The liability section, one decision that the commissioners made years ago has proven very, very unprofitable, and that's we're self-insured for physical damage on our automobiles. We are insured on our mobile equipment, the big stuff, for physical damage. So if we have a radiator that burns up or something, we have that covered. But none of the automobiles, so we only cover them for liability insurance. And I can only, in the last 12 years, I think I can only recall two losses that we've ever really been affected. I mean, we have some small ones that you pay, we didn't have insurance, but nothing major in 20 years, so family has done well with that. Our automobile liability is going up again, it's just experience with CIS, the rates are going up. And last year, we were at 58,000 and they're saying they have to charge 66,000 this year. The big area is general liability. These are torch flames for everything other than automobile situation. You can see last year's premium was 343,000 and now they want 384,000. Commissioner Elfrin has been on the board for CIS, and he's probably heard a lot about this, they've been trying to do everything. They've raised deductionals, unemployment-related claims, they've had mandatory deductional, they have some penalty deductionals if you don't call in. And it doesn't look like it's turned yet, but eventually we hope to have rates at least stabilize in this liability area. You can see the difference four years ago is a 277, now we're at 100,000 just because of overall rates. It's not just strictly Umatilla County, we're not sure, but it's really the overall statewide. The credits down below, just because we have multiple lines of insurance that give us a credit of 16,000. And here, the allowance for the agent, normally they pay 10% commission, so that's where the 54,000 comes. So as your premium gets higher, you have a better rate for us as your agent. Right, since we're on a flat fee basis again, if we charge 19,000. So you can see your premium total of 491,000, and that compares with last year of 455, so it's about $37,000 higher. That's all I have. Is there any questions that you may have?
Dick, I don't see any loss experience here. What's been the county's loss ratio on these particular items?
I don't have that with me, and I will admit that, though. It varies.
It's up and down, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had any major ones, so it's mostly, you know, jail clients. We have a lot of these small inmates that have some problems and they start throwing torch flames at us. But nothing I can see that's a trend or any significant in that area. I think this is just strictly a count of our statewide, which is the county.
I know there have been some rather large losses throughout the state, and an awful lot of them pertain to jails and the operation of the jail, which is always a sensitive thing, and it seems like they're very, very willing to bring lawsuits. And it's hard to defend.
The other thing that's happened, I haven't seen any direct evidence of how much it affects, but years ago, maybe five or six years ago, there was a lawsuit against OHSU with a baby that was severely injured while they were there. And a suit was brought for millions of dollars because of the care with this. And unfortunately, at that time, the torch limitation on suits against any public county was $100,000 for bodily injury. And the court, we were afraid they were going to throw that out completely and not have a torch limitation in Oregon, but the Oregon Supreme Court ruled that, no, they would leave it alone place, but the amount of limit, that limit was much too low, and they demanded that the legislature act within a reasonable period, otherwise they would change their decision. And we did. And it's been bumped up every year, and it's now up to 777,000 as a percentage every year that's gone up. So I think that has some effect on the claims too, because just the number that people can sue for now in that situation probably has some effect.
Okay, other questions? Do you have an order to?
I don't know, sorry, you seem to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the current workers' compensation insurance with the, with SAFE and approve the payable for the premium.
Second? Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dick, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we renew the property and liability insurance with CIS.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I can have a signature on that form and that for the workers' compensation, I can send that in and we're all set. I will make you copy and give it to Dan, since you have.
Dick, I want to thank you for your work in guiding this through and keeping us informed and taken care of in the insurance area.
Thank you. It's good to have an insurance partner on the board here.
Okay, the emergency management update.
Tom Roberts, Umatilla County Emergency Manager. I'll keep this short, sweet for this update. I'll talk revenues with you. This year, I was just advised on June 20th for fiscal year 16, which is our current fiscal cycle, emergency management program grant funds. Oregon Emergency Management determined to, that they were able to reallocate $125,000 of state funds back to local jurisdictions because of the fact that we had went over a little bit in our request for funding, Umatilla County will actually be receiving approximately $4,364 additional dollars in emergency management program grant funds to be applied towards personnel costs for fiscal year 2016, which is good news. That's in addition to the, I think we're at 72,282, I believe, off the top of my head, that we were already awarded. For the upcoming fiscal year, emergency management program grant allocations, Umatilla County has been tentatively awarded $82,204 for EMPG reimbursements. So that will be coming, that will be a revenue for our upcoming fiscal cycle. In addition, there are two other grants that are pending potentially, the 2018 Hazards Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. This is one where I will actually need your authorization to continue on. The HMEP grant application was submitted with Commissioner Elfrin's authorization, kind of at a last-minute whim. We had, this is the first opportunity we've had to get in front of the commissioners of the ask for permission. Tentatively, we will be awarded $28,000 of a grant total, $35,000 grant total, to be applied towards use in emergency, or I'm sorry, in hazardous materials, tabletop exercises for that, for the 2017 fiscal cycle. The 35,000, the $28,000 is the amount that will be provided. The remaining amount, the 20%, then is in a soft match, and that's where I need your authorization to proceed, because while it's not directly funds necessarily out of pocket, we will be applying a 20% match to any funds we expend. So before I can proceed any farther with that, I need your authorization to proceed with that.
And what is the grant?
The grant is the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. It's through the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office and in cooperation with our local emergency preparedness, our LIPC, our local emergency plan.
And the matching, the matching part of that we can do is in-kind?
As in-kind, correct.
Okay, so, but that's still going to take staff time, so there will be costs.
Yeah, so it'd be staff time, or if we have an exercise, for instance, and we, which we've done in the past, where we provide donuts and meals, things like that, that would all be applied towards that 20%.
Okay. And is your budget okay for that?
I believe so, yes. The maximum amount, I believe, is $7,000 if you use the full 28.
You want a motion on that?
I would.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the soft match for the, for the grant.
Okay, I will second.
Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Any further discussion, comments? Okay, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. And the advantage of that is, as we were discussing earlier before the meeting, we can actually hold now a tabletop exercise for this facility as long as it's related to hazardous materials, say an evacuation or something, and utilize those funds.
Okay.
So that's a, that's a very big positive for us. And then finally, we, the Commission has already been briefed once before on the state homeland security grant when we came and asked for the authorization to apply for two projects. I'm happy to report that Oregon Emergency Management has put out the ranked list, which is basically the first step in having the funds allocated. On that ranked list, one of our two projects made the, made the funding list. We will, we have requested $24,000 for the Yumitala County Sheriff's Office Small Unmanned Aerial Systems Enhancement Project for drones. Oregon Emergency Management has agreed to rank us tentatively for a grant award of $15,000 towards that project. And our second, our other project, which was for $94,000 and some change, in cooperation with Moro County for some UTVs, was actually not awarded any funding, but we were sitting right on the cutoff. We're next in line. If, if the Department of Homeland Security decides they're not going to fund any of these, then we may still have a shot at that, but it's, it's nice, so.
Are these matching at all?
This particular one is not. This is $15,000 upfront for us to outspend towards SCAAS technologies.
Okay, great.
And the last thing I have then would be, just to, to let you know, and I believe you're already aware, though, that we have been working closely with, with EOTech and we're making preparations now for the inaugural year at the EOTech site for the Yumitala County Fair. We've had representatives from East Yumitala County Fire District, I'm sorry, Yumitala County Fire District Number One, from the EOTech Board as well as the Fair Board, the rodeo board, my office and the Sheriff's Office, as well as Hermison PD, working together to come up with a plan. And I think that we, we've come up with a pretty good plan. We actually had a tabletop exercise about a week ago and we're taking the lessons from that, from that to apply towards finalizing that plan. That should be, should be presented to the EOTech Board here pretty soon for approval. So we're, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're prepared for any kind of need contingency, things along those lines for the, for the county fair. And we are also leaning forward a little bit for the Eclipse. Eclipse is another big event. We're going to have a presence in the Regional Joint Information Center in La Grande as well as establishing enhanced communications capabilities in Southern of the county. We're anticipating a large flow of payments.
Okay.
If you don't have any questions, that ends my briefing for you.
Doug, did we need to do a motion on that second, Craig? The 15,000?
No.
Okay. All right. Tom, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, the next order of business is the ambulance service area boundary amendment. And that will.
Remake.
I was going to tell you, just stay up here. This will become a, a public hearing, so this time I'm opening the public hearing on our ambulance service area boundary amendment. And I'll call for the staff report.
Okay, so again, Tom Roberts, Yumitala County Emergency Manager, and I also am the administrator for the ambulance service area plan for Yumitala County. And one of the things that our ASA Committee has requested is that we come in front of you and request a boundary change between the Yumitala, or the CTUIR ambulance service boundary and Medicaid 400 ambulance service boundary, just to bring those in line with the new taxation district that has, that will actually start for Medicaid 400, July 1st, I believe it is, the new fiscal year. So what we're asking the Commission to do is to authorize that boundary change so we put that in the plan and so that that change will become in effect at the same time as the taxation district change.
Okay. Questions?
We discussed, I thought that issue came up a while back.
It did at the time they were forming the East Yumitala County Health District.
Okay.
And when they were forming the boundaries of that, they intentionally excluded the area on the reservation. And so, but at that point, it didn't really address the ASA boundaries, it just created a new district. And so now that the district has been formed, went to implement that portion of it and then also remove the area on the reservation and allocate that to that ASA.
Okay, other questions? All right. Do we have anyone here from the public that wants to speak in favor of this amendment?
And then just to point out to the board, there was one other change. This ASA 2 is the Hermison-Yumitala area that's now been, will be combined with the one ASA.
Okay, and we're doing both of those?
Yes, all of them.
Same orders.
Yes.
So anyone that is wanting to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak at all? Okay, with that, I'm going to close this portion of our public hearing. Other questions?
I have no questions.
Do we need two separate motions? Just the one?
Just the one.
Okay, and you have?
Mr. Chair, I'll move adoption of ordinance 2017-10.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Tom, you may have to come back, so.
Aye.
Okay, the next item of business is the mobile command vehicle. Jim, you're presenting that today?
Well, I, partially, yes.
You want backup?
I have much backup here. Captain Williamson here, he's our fleet manager for our Sheriff's Office vehicles. I have Sergeant Dwight Johnson who runs our search and rescue team. Of course, we have Tom here, who is Emergency Manager, as well as Sean Halsey, who is from the Yumitala Moro Radio Data District.
Okay.
So what we're seeking is approval to purchase this, what we call the mobile incident command vehicle. There's several different names for this type of vehicle. It is a 2004 F-450, extra cab, four-wheel drive with a little over 30,000 miles. The vehicle currently is owned by the Radio Data District and they have agreed to sell it to us for a price of $65,000. They acquired the vehicle back in 2008, 2009-ish for a cost of about $151,000. They currently use the vehicle, it's still in their use. They use it to service radio towers and some other purposes. I think Sean can kind of speak a little bit more about exactly what they use it for. But their needs have changed so that they are wanting to sell this vehicle and purchase a smaller four-wheel drive truck that they can get into even more remote locations where there are some towers that they can't access with this vehicle because of the size. So they agreed to sell it to us for $65,000. We will defer payment until after July 1st of 2017 to be applied to the next fiscal year. We've had some independent appraisals on this vehicle from some experts in the industry who deal with these types of vehicles. One from Nomad Global Communication Solutions, who values the vehicle between 65 and 75,000 currently. And we have another appraisal from, I believe it's a company called HW. And they've also said that the vehicle at this price is a very good price equipped as, as is. E M. Roberts has been on the, I guess, the wants list through state surplus for over a year, looking for vehicles of this nature. He's found and has received information from them that there is nothing currently in, in federal or state surplus that would meet our needs. They sent us some examples of some vehicles that were chassis only, no box and no, no equipment as this current vehicle is equipped. Are there photographs in this? You'll be able to see some photographs of the vehicle. So we believe it's a, a good value at 65,000.
There you go.
I believe Commissioner Givens has, has taken a look at it as well. I don't know if.
I have.
The other Commissioner does. So it could be used for, for multiple purposes. Any policing events that require multi-jurisdictional response, search and rescue missions, of course, that, that would be a good use for it. Emergency management, any disasters or things of that nature where we need to have a mobile command center where we can operate radios, dispatch personnel, there's a variety of uses. What comes to mind currently is that over the weekend we had the search and rescue mission for the 13-year-old girl up at Tollgate area. This would have been certainly useful in that case. So currently, the search and rescue personnel are using the insides of their vehicles to compensate for a, for lack of this kind of vehicle. And that certainly isn't, isn't adequate. The other items that are on the vehicle certainly as equipped would be useful for, for what we need. Funding for the purchase would come through the vehicle management, the fleet management fund, which is currently, every year there is 150,000 of new money, which is, the fund is used to purchase vehicles that meet the Sheriff's Office's needs, whether it's in patrol or marine patrol, we purchase vehicles for all aspects of Sheriff's Office operations. We would still currently be able to purchase, I think our plan is to purchase three more patrol vehicles and then the remaining funds would be used to purchase this vehicle in lieu of replacing two very low mileage administrative vehicles, which we could keep for another year with no problem. Would have really no significant impact on the fleet as is and the funds are available.
So Jim, are you saying you're giving up the purchasing of two vehicles to do that?
Two, two admin vehicles. They're still relative, I think around 60,000 miles that don't get the use that a patrol vehicle would. They would go for another year until we would replace or probably in the next cycle.
And they're in good enough shape, you think you can make it through?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. Without a doubt.
How much?
Question for me or the, any of the other staff here?
Looking at the pictures of it, the entire, the interior of it's pretty empty. What type of equipping would you foresee for this vehicle?
Well, we would most likely equip with a bit more radio equipment, probably some computers, some big screen, monitors. I think Sergeant Johnson, E M. Roberts can tell you a little bit more exactly what they envisioned for it. But those kinds of things that would make it more usable, we want to be able to gather the command staff in a vehicle like this. It also becomes a safety matter when we have our personnel out in very inclement weather in the middle of winter, they're out in the snow and ice. And this weekend, they're out in the heat. So this would provide them also a place to conduct their operations in a more safe manner instead of being out in the open.
How many can gather in there?
Pardon?
How many could gather there?
Oh, I believe four or five probably, would you guys say?
I think we've had six.
Sure. Again, questions for more specifics?
This is beside the point, but when I was campaigning years ago, I had a friend that let me use a fire engine, pumper. And I had a special awning made that connected to the side of that pumper with legs on it and it was an awning that was the length of that pumper and you had kind of a two-sided tent that people could gather under while you were campaigning. And I, as I looked at the side of that, might be possible for you to put together something as an outside. I, I don't know, that was just.
Many jurisdictions have vehicles such as these, some much more elaborate than this. I know Commissioner Murdock, Commissioner Elfrin mentioned that he saw a vehicle down in Southern California, an emergency command vehicle like this, which was probably a $10,000, a $10 million project. So we're, we're nowhere near that, but we, we certainly need something that would meet our needs.
That was at the NAFA convention and Reed said they.
Because they come in very, very different configurations, a very.
I looked at and toured that very thing, the vehicle. So, yeah, you're looking at millions of dollars.
But LA can probably afford that.
Yeah.
The equipment that you're, you're projecting maybe needing to put into there, is that coming from existing inventory or will there be?
A combination.
Okay. Out of current budget?
Yep. Combination. Sure. I think we've got to accommodate a bit to speak. I think they're all. I know E M. Roberts would like to say a little bit about the vehicle and the uses that he envisions on a long, on a long-term plan.
The reason this has been so delayed, been constant questions about, is this the best value for the dollar? And is there something that is, is good value or better value for less money? Well, you're saying you've done your due diligence, you've looked, you've checked with the state, you've checked with federal, and there is nothing available.
That is correct.
So I have no other questions.
I don't either unless we have some other discussion.
Okay, just, just to address the, real fast if we could, the, the comment about the fiscal responsibility, you know, I, I kind of, kind of took it upon my shoulders early on to start looking for a function. The functionality being is, that was missing in our county, that was for the ability to get command staff mobilized. We can't always get out and, and work from a static location such as an EOC, especially in a, in a county that's 3,000 square miles. Sometimes we need to be closer. Sat down with these folks and started talking about what do we need? And we, we kind of developed a phased plan. Phase one being we need, we needed something small, agile, mobile, four-wheel drive that can get up into some of our, our outlying areas, our mountainous terrain, things like that. And then something larger for the larger incidents such as the waystation firewall we're bringing in more than four or five people, we're bringing in 20 or 30. And I started looking at the, the probability of grants. And one of the things I learned was when we're dealing with grants, the, the folks that provide these dollars like to see phased projects. They like to see projects that are either 100% or matched. And they like to see a buy-in. And so essentially what we're doing with the, with the purchase of this vehicle is we are, we are taking on phase one and we are buying in or as, as I've mentioned, leveraging for phase two. In other words, when we go to phase two and we start looking at, okay, we need a larger unit that can work in tandem with this one, such as a trailer. An example of which, Lincoln County just got a, a grant award for $150,000 for something similar, as far as the trailer goes, that I, that I planned and envisioned on phase two. That was 100% grant. That wasn't a match grant and that was because they already had some, some leveraging in, in that. And that's what we're looking at here. So there's, it goes beyond just the, the value of this specific truck. But in regards to this item, I've spent the better part of nine months researching, watching lists and everything else. And I, I personally think that if, if it wasn't a community asset and I wasn't spending community dollars, if this was something I was personally buying for myself, I would pull the trigger on it because that's the best value that we've been able to find out there. And, and there's no, absolutely no doubting the fact that it was customized for the, for the UMRD, Yumitala Moro Radio Data District. And when it was constructed, it was, it was constructed, taken into consideration our topography here and, and the variability of that topography. So the fact that it matches our needs on, on the emergency management and the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department side of the house is, is absolutely no coincidence. It's because it was, it was specified in the specs just for a region. So it's absolutely what we need.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the purchase of the mobile command vehicle with the, with the prices and the figures provided.
Okay. Do you want me to second that? I'll second that. I just want to see him swear.
We're waiting for George to win.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Budget transfers. How many do we have? Three.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County. This morning, we have three transfers of appropriations. Budget order 2017-79, the Aware Community Benefit Program, requires a transfer of appropriations to allocate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $2,000 and decrease in contingency of $2,000. Budget order 2017-80, Environmental Health On-Site Septic Program. The On-Site Septic Program requires a transfer of appropriations to allocate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of $3,000 and a decrease in materials and services of $3,000. And budget order 2017-81, General Fund Civil. The Civil Program requires a transfer of appropriations to allocate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $5,000 and a decrease in the general fund contingency of $5,000.
Questions?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 2017-79.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of budget order 2017-80.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of budget order 2017-81.
Aye. Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
Okay. I'll sign them here in a minute. Nuisance ordinance. And this will be a public hearing. This is dealing with some issues with the, is it, rodeo city? So, okay. With that, I am opening the public hearing on this ordinance. We'll call in for the staff report.
This is coming before the board. Previously, you had heard about a condition of one building that really did not have any way to address the violations it has. It really isn't a solid waste situation. So you requested that a dangerous building regulation be drafted and brought back to you for consideration, and that's what's before you now. This one looks largely based on a similar ordinance out of Plaquins County. It defines dangerous buildings, what constitutes them, and then once one is defined, then action taken to abate that violation, to bring it, to basically decode or to abate the dangerousness. And if they don't, then there is the capability of the county stepping in and abating the violation. It would be very similar for a solid waste ordinance, it's just that it's a different type of situation, define the dangerous building, and then it can be enforced through the code enforcement ordinance through the courts.
And we've had a number of other buildings through the, across the county that, one example is buildings that have been damaged by fire. They sit there forever and nobody does anything with them.
And this is specifically designed for commercial zones or commercial areas.
Okay.
Residential buildings that have reached a state of deterioration will not be affected by this?
Not the way it's drafted, though. I mean, you can change that if you wanted to, but it was specifically designed mostly for commercial buildings.
And what kind of teeth will this give us? This would, I'm assuming, be the same as our code enforcement abatement process where...
It would be, if they do not do it themselves, then they have potential fines, not substantial, $1,000. But then we have the penalties of $500 per week. And so, in addition, the county can go in, abate the problem, and then assess the cost back to the property.
Okay. Questions? Okay. At this point in time, I'm going to open this up for comments by the public, and those even though you're staff, you're public.
(inaudible) afterwards, just to work out what he wants.
Okay. Hearing no other comments. Is there any comment in favor or in opposition? All right. With that, I am going to close this portion of the public hearing, and I'm ready for...
This can be done without a second hearing?
It can if you want to, or it could be set for scheduled second hearing if you want.
I would prefer this be done.
I would too. Mr. Chair, move we adopt ordinance 2017-11.
Second. Any further questions?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The last one, well, we have two. Roofing payable?
Right. This is coming before the board. It would previously approve the rerouting of the shop maintenance building, and that's for about approximately $15,000. The approval vote did not include the insulation, and so this is coming back before the cost of insulation is $5,060, so the total payable is $20,760, and that's the reason it's coming back to you for formal approval.
What was the total, and did it, of the other bid that was submitted in competition with this, and did it include the insulation?
This one did not, this one only had one. There wasn't any...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That was the first go-around. We did have that company that did the second for this third portion.
Okay. Mr. Chair, move approval of the increase the amount to $20,760 on the roofing.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a generator payable?
And this is also coming before the board. It was originally approved by the finance department because it was within the CFO's parameters for approval, but once it was installed, they found out that the actual cost exceeded that, and it's within the board's range for approval. Apparently, there was additional work to be done. They did it overtime, and there was additional cost, and so that ran up the total to $8,842.20.
And this too, did it have a second bid on the original amount?
No, because it was originally under $5,000, so it didn't require it. And above 510, we normally try to get quotes, and they, of course, didn't because it was already being installed when it was exceeded the $5,000.
Pretty substantial increase.
And I don't know if the CFO has any further explanation, that's what was provided.
Are we okay financially for this?
Yeah. I believe that it'll, I have to check, I believe it will be paid next fiscal year.
Okay.
It ran up about 100%, I thought, the original estimate plus here. That's a substantial increase as a private party. If I were having the work done for myself, I would be rather upset with that, I guess. Sometimes it gets in a situation where it's, there's almost no acceptable way to proceed if it's been installed to the point where it's almost more money to take it out and mess with it than...
I've been involved in some remodel projects like that. Oh, by the way...
I move approval.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have any need for an executive session?
No.
Okay. Do we need commissioners' reports? We covered that in the staff meeting, I think, the other day, so... All right. Very good. We're adjourned.